Hello, this is Kate, just checking my audio quick. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Hey Kate, it's Dan Reese. They let me know in the control room, we are good to go whenever you are ready.
The control room is good to go.
Wonderful, thank you. It looks like we are seven o'clock right on. Trying to see, make sure we have everyone too. Looks like we do. So why don't we go ahead and get started? So welcome everyone to the February 9th, 2022, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. Due to the surge in local COVID-19 cases, this meeting is being held electronically to ensure the safety of all residents and staff. All members of the commission and staff are participating from their homes or offices. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on all matters. We have been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important to know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. So you do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there are two public hearings. Individuals who want to provide testimony remotely for a public hearing can call 1-800-374-0221 with conference ID 2450717. There is no community comment during the meeting tonight. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your phone name and address. Staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they go over their three minutes. Remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight if you've already provided feedback in another way. Also, please do not repeat any information that has already been presented. Provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. Thank you all in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this meeting online. We hope that there will not be any issues, but please be assured that we'll do our best to continue the meeting as best we can if there are glitches. So thank you to everyone for tuning in tonight and for your interest in the planning commission and our work in the city. So with that, if we could do a roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Alkire?
Here.
Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Berube?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Hayward?
Here.
Chair Agnew?
Sure. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of our meeting agenda. And so if we have any updates, please make those updates. Otherwise I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner? Did you second that?
I think Commissioner Alkire second, but I'm happy to second. I heard someone else second. I was going to, but.
That was a close call, but we'll give it.
Commissioner Alkire, you're very hard for me to hear. Actually, I don't know if there's anything you could do to turn up your audio.
I will work on that, Kate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a first by Commissioner Strauss and a second by Commissioner Alkire.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the roll call.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Alkire?
Hi.
Commissioner Olson?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Chair Agnew?
Hi, thank you. The meeting agenda has been approved. We'll now move on to our approval of meeting minutes, and there are two that we need to review tonight. The first is an updated and corrected meeting minutes from our June 9th, 2021 meeting. If there could be either comments or a motion on that.
I would move approval of the June 9th, 2021 meeting minutes.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Alkire?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Olson?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Chair Agnew?
Hi. Thank you. Those updated minutes have been approved. Next is a review of our January 26th, 2022 meeting minutes.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting of January 26th. I'll second.
All right, roll call, please. Let's.
Commissioner Alkire?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Olson?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Chair Agnew?
Hi. Thank you. Those minutes from the January 26th, 2022 meeting have also been approved. Next, we'll go into our public hearings, of which there are two tonight. The first is a 20-foot variance request for 4617 Lexington Avenue. Assistant Planner Acker will be presenting that tonight.
Thank you. Chair, members of the planning commission, this item is upon setback variance request for 4617 Lexington Avenue. Subject property is located at the very end of Lexington Avenue. The house is lined up with the other homes on the south side of Lexington Avenue. It's a very large lot, however, there's a pond taking up quite a bit of it. House is non-conforming currently in terms of setback in both in two places along the west side. And also the pond setback, it's a single-story home with an attached two-car garage. It was built in 1947, so prior to our current ordinance requirements. This is a photo of the very end of Lexington. You can see the pond beyond, and this is the property. Very large lot. This is the existing home on current survey. The setback along the west side is five feet. The minimum side yard setback is 10 feet. The minimum setback from the pond is 50 feet, and currently the house is at 29 feet. When home was originally built, the setback that was required from a water body was 50 feet, or 25 feet, pardon me, not 50 feet. So it did conform to the ordinance requirements at the time. There were no variances on record for the property, so I'm assuming that the side yard setback at the time conformed as well. This is what proposing on the property. It's a chair down rebuild. They would like to locate the house approximately in the same setback as the existing home from the pond because they have a very shallow opportunity to build a house within the pond setback. They'll actually be improving upon that setback by one foot. They're hoping to maintain a 30-foot setback from the pond. Then they would increase the setback along the west lot line and meet that 10-foot setback. This is actually the red crosshatch area that is the buildable lot, portion of the lot, showing the 50-foot setback that would be required, the 10-foot setback along the west lot line, the front yard setback to the north, and the rear yard setback of 25 feet to the south. What it shows is that the buildable area of the lot is very shallow from that westerly lot line, and it would push all of or most of the buildable area against that 10-foot setback in order to maintain a 50-foot setback from the pond. This is the house that was built to the west and also the house next to that. Both of those homes were built on subdivision. That larger lot was subdivided into two properties. And two homes are on the property. They're lined up. Then you'll see the house that's to the east, which is the subject home, is the existing home showing that five-foot setback that will be increased to 10 feet. So it'll be pulled further away from that westerly lot line. And also, the design of the house was to maintain main portion of the house relatively lined up with the other homes to the west and then have the garage go to the north and be further away from that lot line. So it breaks up the building mass along that westerly lot line and to reduce any impact to the properties to the west. So this is the compliance table. The proposed new home will meet all of the ordinance requirements with the exception of that setback from ponding area, which they would be improving upon by one foot. The front yard setback is actually 54.2 feet away. I mean, it's it's way to the north. They would they would only have to maintain a 33.2-foot setback. They have a deeper rear yard setback that's proposed. They will be maintaining the 10-foot setback. They'll be improving upon that existing non-conforming setback. The building coverage is well below the 25%, and that is without counting the water area that is on the lot. Because ordinance doesn't allow for counting any lot area that's below the water line for the lot coverage requirement, so they're still well below the 25%. They're also below the maximum building height. It's going to be more in line with the other homes that are occurring. And then they will be maintaining that first floor height requirement. So this is the basement floor plan that's being proposed, and it shows that unexcavated garage area that's to the north, that is further away from that westerly lot line. Then the main floor, which they're proposing a deck off the east side of the house and they in that deck area, so it would maintain that setback. They're not they wouldn't be allowed to have any additional improvements then to the east because they're not meeting the setback along that easterly lot line. They are, however, maintaining the deep rear yard setback, so that if sometime in the future the property owner wants to add anything onto the house, a porch, patio, or any other deck, they would have the opportunity to do that because that would be beyond the 50-foot setback of the pond. So this is the house in context. If you were looking at it with a south view, with the main portion of the house that would be adjacent to the neighboring homes, and then the garage to the north, it would be inset and further away from the neighboring properties and add that 30-foot setback. And the easterly view, again, they've inset that deck. There won't be any other improvements in this area. They've left some opportunity to add on if they if a property owner would like to add something to the south that would not within the setback area of the pond. And then the house in context with the other homes, the other homes along the block, the two that have been recently built, given the subdivision. Staff believes the proposal meets the criteria for a variance to allow one-foot improvement to the existing non-conforming home setback, so it would be a 20-foot request for the following reason. The proposed use is permitted. The R1 single dwelling in a district complies with the zoning standards with the exception of the setback from the pond. The practical difficulty is the required distance from the pond that has doubled since the existing home was constructed. It didn't need a variance at that time, causing the home to be not that home to be non-conforming. And that existing condition is caused by the ordinance change and not by any action of the property owner. They're just trying to figure out a way to to comfortably put the house on the site, given the setback conditions. The variance allows the new home to maintain comfortable distances from the neighbors to the west and to the south, and the required pond setback provides limited opportunity for a building footprint depth from the pond, potentially causing more impact to other properties if it were to be built within the setback requirements. The proposed home fits the character of the neighborhood in height, scale, and mass. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot and improves improvements will enhance the property. It could be taller. It could cover more of the property. It's not as far back as it could be into the rear yard, nor is it further north. So there is, it is to scale to the other homes along the block. Staff recommends approval of the variances requested, subject to the findings listed and subject to the survey and building plans and elevations that were attached as part of the packet. And then compliance with the conditions and comments listed in the environmental engineer's memo. There were a number of comments on Better Together Edina. They were all positive from adjacent neighbors and nearby neighbors. There were also some letters that were submitted as part of the packet. Andy Porter with Refined is the applicant, and he is present as well. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Assistant Planner Acker. Do we have any questions? Anyone have any questions tonight? Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, thank you. Chris, is there the pond, is there an outlet on the pond to the city dump system?
No, I don't know. Offhand, I don't know. I know the environmental engineer has reviewed it, and there aren't any issues in terms of drainage with the proposal.
Any history of that pond rising that? I mean, it's so, so our requirement is distance from the pond. I would think the more important fact would be the elevation above the pond, but.
And that's been reviewed by engineering, and the the low floor is above the requirement. So they are meeting the low floor. They're they're actually elevated from the pond.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and I think your materials show that, I mean, to meet that requirement, it almost becomes an unbuildable lot. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Berube?
Thank you. Director Acker, remind me, this is very similar to the proposal that we had at our last meeting. And I don't know if it's discussed, but are these are these restrictions put in place to protect the property value or to protect the water shed?
They're actually required by the state. They come, they come from the state in terms of they've in prior to 1990, the setbacks were allowed to be closer, and this is, these were statewide requirements by the DNR. That has now changed as of 1990. It's changed from 25 to 50 feet and in some instances to 75 feet. I believe it's it's in order to allow some distance and protection for water bodies. Becomes a real challenge in situations, especially when you have a lot of properties that were developed many years ago and they're much closer to water bodies. In fact, there are some homes along Lake Cornelia that are bisected by that 75-foot, or it's actually almost in front of the front of the house, which makes it really difficult to try to work within the ordinance because there isn't enough space. But yes, I think it was in order to provide a buffer adequate spacing, not crowd around.
So it's it's to protect the water, not to protect the property value, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one, Planner Acker. I, if I remember correctly, based off of the one visual you provided, the house would still be tucked back a bit. But then there was a rendering of the house that made me question the driveway in conjunction to the road. If you're driving on that street, does it, the street still overlook the pond? Or is the garage now at the end of that street? In the proposed rendering?
Right. It's actually south of it would be approximately a few feet from the front lot line of the adjacent neighboring properties. So it's south of where Lexington Avenue terminates. So if you're going to be in the street looking towards the pond, you'd still be able to see it. The setback would allow for that garage or any portion of the house to go all the way up to within 33 feet of that north lot line. So yes, it could. I guess if if they wanted to design a house, they could design a house where it would it does not in this instance.
Thank you. Great. Seeing no other questions, I will invite Mr. Porter. If there's anything that you would like to share or present tonight.
I am Andy Porter. I'm with Refined. I really don't have a lot more to add than what Chris has done. It's been thorough, obviously, review. I would like to first off answer the question that was asked from Commissioner Strauss, I believe, about the outlet. There is an outlet to the pond on the south end of the pond that connects any overflow, and it takes it south to St. John's. So that pond is limited at a high watermark as an outlet. So it can't go any higher than a certain point, if that answers your question. As far as whatever, what else I can add caller here, this is a very majestic little spot. We've had comments and a lot of people from around the pond. This becomes kind of the the neighborhood gathering spot in the winter time. They they set up a ice rink with lights, and it becomes quite the social place. And a lot of the people that live on or around the pond are very good friends with my clients who are going to be building the home for us. So they're very, very excited for this this to happen. So we're really excited as well. But other than that, I think I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have as the best I can, so. Let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Do we have any questions tonight? I don't think that I'm seeing any. Before we open up the public hearing for this, did the homeowner want to make any statements? I see Ed Noonan that you called in. Okay. So with that, we will go to our public hearing. So we will now hear from residents who would like to provide testimony. So to participate, call in now at 1-800-374-0221 with conference ID 2450717. An operator will ask you for your name and street address and put you in queue to speak after you press star one. Everyone will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your phone name and address. Staff member Liz Olson will let anyone know who calls in if they go over their three minutes. And remember, it's not necessary to provide any testimony. If you've already provided comments via voicemail or BetterTogetherEdina.org, please call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward. And with that, we will see if any callers dial in tonight.
This is Dan. We do have two callers on the line right now. However, they may be on for the next public hearing. So if we want to wait about 30 seconds or so, just give them a chance to hit star one if they want to give testimony for this one. Otherwise, stand by.
Thank you. Yes, just to reiterate, if you are on the line in which to provide public testimony now, please press star one.
I think you are good to go ahead. Nobody has entered the queue.
All right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, Liz, can we please do a roll call?
Commissioner Alkire?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Olson?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Chair Agnew?
Hi. All right, the public hearing is closed. So I'll open it up to fellow commissioners for comments. Commissioner Alkire?
I'll get us started. Thanks for the presentation. I thought it was very clear. Seems to me the practical difficulty is quite apparent given the the shape of a lot and the buildable area. So this seems to be something that I could support pretty easily.
I would say I'm influenced by the fact that the current home is actually at a similar spot, and this this would actually increase the distance by a foot. But it's at least not making it worse.
But it's at least not making it worse. If there weren't a home there currently, I, I think this would be a much different story. But there's currently a home there and this actually will be further away from the, from the shoreline. So that's what I think I'm focusing on at this point.
Any other comments or discussion? Or a motion?
I, I move to approve the variance as submitted in the staff memo. I would, I would just make one comment. So in the staff memo, there's two bullet points. And the first bullet point references a survey, and I believe the date's wrong. So we just want to confirm that date. But assuming we correct that, then I would move to approve as submitted in the staff memo.
I second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will go to our roll call. Liz, please.
Commissioner Altaire.
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss.
Hi.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Commissioner Barubi.
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda.
Hi.
Chair Agnew.
Hi. Thank you very much. This variance has been approved. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on our agenda tonight. And I'm not the only one that was confused by these addresses, I'm assuming. So tonight, the second public hearing is 4716 Towns Road for a first floor elevation variance. And presenting tonight will be Assistant Planner Botticker, please.
Thank you, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. 4716 Towns Road is located at the intersections of Towns Road and Bridge Lane and Towns Road and 48th Street West. The existing home on the subject property is a two-story home with a two-car attached garage that was built in 1939. The existing home is oriented towards Town Road and the garage is accessed off of 48th Street West. The applicant is requesting a 5.02-foot first floor elevation variance to allow for a new home to be built with a first floor 6.02 feet higher than the existing first floor of the house that currently sits on the site today. The proposed new home will be oriented off of Bridge Lane. With the exception of the first floor elevation, the proposed project meets all of the city's other zoning requirements. You can see here on the compliance table that it meets all of the city's required setbacks. The overall building height, which is measured from average existing grade, building coverage, and then you can see that the reason for the variance tonight is for the first floor elevation. As you know, there are certain conditions that must be met for a variance to be granted. The first one is to relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the city's ordinance requirements. The proposed use in this instance is allowed in the R1 zoning district and complies with the city's zoning standards with the exception of the first floor elevation. The reason for the first floor elevation variance request is due to the proposed new home being reoriented off of Bridge Lane, which sits at a higher elevation than Towns Road. The new home is not required to be reoriented towards Bridge Lane. The second condition is that there are circumstances that are unique to the property, are not common to every similarly zoned property and are not self-created. This property is unique in the fact that there are three street frontages on three sides of the lot. There is an elevation difference between Towns Road and Bridge Lane. The applicant would like to orient the new home towards Bridge Lane to match the existing house to the west that was built in 2010. The property owner cannot raise the house so it can be oriented towards Bridge Lane without a variance. The new home is required to meet the city's, or today's zoning requirements, including the first floor elevation requirement, but is not required to be reoriented towards Bridge Lane. The third condition is that the alter, or the variance won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Granting the variance may alter the character of the neighborhood in this instance. Although there are other two-story homes with attached garages in the neighborhood, the proposed new home will be reoriented towards Bridge Lane and will sit six feet higher than the existing house on the subject property. Staff outlined a couple of options in the staff report tonight, and a case can be made for approval and denial of this project. The staff report included findings for approval and denial. With that being said, staff cannot support the request given the ability to comply with the first floor elevation requirement without reorienting the house. And with that, staff, staff recommends denial of the 5.02-foot first floor elevation variance request for a new house at 4716 Towns Road. And with that, I can answer any questions and the applicant as well as the property owner are both on the call tonight.
Thank you so much, Assistant Planner Botticker. Any questions from the commissioners tonight? No, all right. Seeing, seeing none. We can go to the applicant tonight. Invite the applicant to speak.
Excellent. It's Randy Scory. 3712 Zenith Avenue South is, is where I live. 4716 Towns Road is, is the address of the property. So a, a couple of things I just wanted to point out is when we first looked at this property, we were hoping to keep the front of it on Towns Road. That was our goal. When we dug into the plans and researched it further, we were somewhat surprised to learn that the, the, the front yard variance is actually on Bridge Lane. And so the setback on Bridge is 51.6 feet. And then the second largest setback is on 48th. So the two sides are, are the, have the largest setbacks, which is atypical. And so when we looked at it, and I'm, I'll pull up a picture here if you don't mind as we talk. Sure this works. Can you see that, my screen?
I cannot see it yet.
Okay, here we go. Let me know if that, that work?
Yes, I can see it now. Thank you.
Okay, so a picture might be better. So, you know, so the setback from, this is the setback from Bridge Lane is 51.6 feet. The setback over here is 25 feet, and as you can see, the existing house is very narrow. It's 44.3 feet wide, and then, you know, it's, it actually goes to the edge of the property and beyond. It actually encroaches a little bit on the neighboring property here. So you can see, I mean, just basically, there, there is no backyard. There's a side yard on Bridge Lane and then a side yard on 48th. And this side yard, we couldn't build a patio or anything within 51.6 feet of, of this street. The other thing that I'd like to point out is there's a significant elevation change from the only neighboring property to the west here. So you could see it's 888.9, 889. I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but throughout this property, it's, it's roughly in that neighborhood. Whereas it's 882 or 80, call it 883 on the other side. So it's, you know, five to six foot drop off, you know, quickly. It's a retaining wall. So you've got that drainage coming into that, that side yard, which is the, the one place we could have privacy for like a patio. In addition to the north, there's also a, a significant elevation change from 887.7, you know, down to 882. Now, it's more gradual, but still a significant elevation change, which would also create drainage, you know, towards the house and towards the only side of the house where you could have a, a private patio if we did continue to front the house on, on Towns Road. And so it's a, I would call it a unique situation that the house, you know, basically goes all the way to and, and encroaches upon that property line. And so this is why we're asking to basically fill in this front yard area to get the elevation to be more consistent with, with Bridge Lane. So that's, that's kind of the background of the project. I, I would say there was a lot of negative feedback from the neighborhood. Emily, thank you for not mentioning that. But I, I, and I, what I had hoped to do is my wife and I had went through all 30 of the, the comments, and we just wanted to make sure that, that we addressed those, if, if that's okay. For those that are listening.
Sure.
And actually, there, there is, there is one other comment I should make on this, this elevation. There is precedence for this, what we're asking for. And I don't have access to every property that has ever been, has ever requested a first floor variance. But 4924 East Sunny Slope did gain approval for a first floor elevation increase of 11 and a half feet, 10 and a half feet above allowed, as they reoriented that house from Hilltop Lane to East Sunny Slope. So it wasn't, it didn't have roads on all three sides, but it did have roads on two sides. And so they reoriented the house. And obviously, they could have built that house on Hilltop Lane, but they, they were able to get approval for that variance. And I think it's also important to note that that house is not, 4924 Sunny Slope is not on a floodplain. Because I believe the most common reason for approving this variance is, is if it were, if the property were located near a floodplain. I would, I would show that while this is not, this property is not in a floodplain, it is right up against a floodplain, and I'm not sure if this is coming through well. But you can see the red that comes all the way to 48th. And this property is, you know, basically on the other side of the 48th. So it's not on the floodplain or in the floodplain, I should say, but it is adjacent to the floodplain, if that makes sense. Just going to pause there. Does that? Any comments or questions on that? All right, so I'll move into the, the neighborhood feedback, if that's all right. So 22 of the respondents were very concerned about the trees. And, you know, this is our version one of our tree replacement plan. And so what we were hoping to identify is, you know, where the trees are on the property and then what the elevation is. So that the, the forester would be able to, to review that and make comment. I know we, we could have done a better job in our version one. These three trees on the 48th side, we fully expect that these trees are going to be fine. Obviously, you know, as we get into construction, things can change. But we, we would fully expect that these trees on the south side here would all survive. This number two tree here that I'm circling may have to have a limb or two removed, but we believe that that tree would survive. I would also say that any oak tree, you know, this, this neighborhood is the White Oaks neighborhood and, and it, which is one of the reasons why we love it. We love the trees. And any tree, any oak tree that we cannot ensure that lives on, we would obviously replace it. I, I do think that because we're increasing the elevation significantly here, we're being told that there is no way to replace these trees. Now, one of my neighbors that, or one of the neighbors to this property was kind enough to invest some time and meet with me, and, and he had a tree on his property line that he and his neighbor were able to save. And, and so obviously, we would explore any and all avenues to try to save these trees. But if we, if we can't, I, I just want to make sure it's clear that any oak tree we would remove, we would replace. So I just want to make sure that the neighborhood understands that. So there was 22 parties that were concerned about that. Stormwater management, I think there was six people that, that had concerns there. And we've worked with DeMarque Land Surveying and Engineering to create a plan which includes a French drain at the south side of this property. That French drain is sized for 450 square feet of hardcover above and beyond what we're proposing. So it's, i.e. it's oversized and meets Edina's, City of Edina's requirements. The only neighboring property to the left, again, has significant higher elevation. So there's zero discharge going from this property to that property. Our proposed project, there would still be zero moving as that property would still be higher in elevation. The street and vol, the street volume and velocity for a 100-yard storm event will also be reduced from 3.1 cubic feet per second to 3.0. And finally, DeMarque also had to do some analysis due to the landlocked basin to conform to meet City of Edina's requirements. And as you can see in page three of that report, table 4.1, the discharge volume is, is also reduced for the, for the streets and for the neighborhood. The next largest concern was just having a driveway on Bridge Lane and the associated traffic with that driveway. The driveway we're proposing is a double, the width of a double car garage, which is roughly 22 feet or the equivalent of one car length. The, we believe this is consistent with the only adjacent neighbor at Five Bridge Lane. And the other thing I'd mention is the, the, the lot on Bridge Lane is roughly 100 feet. So 22 feet seems reasonable to us. But if not, we, you know, we'd certainly be open to pursuing a narrower driveway if, if we needed to. I would point out that there's only two drivers in our family. Five years from now, we may have a third, but we would all park in our garage. This lot is at the end of Bridge Lane. And so, you know, when we enter Bridge Lane, we're going to go into our property. We're not going to be driving up and down the street. And so I don't believe that we're going to be creating any additional traffic. And then finally, I realize construction is never great right next in, in your neighborhood. We would be open to approaching this property from a construction standpoint to whatever the city and the neighborhood would feel best. So we're certainly open to that. We, we wouldn't have to approach the property from Bridge Lane. And we're open and would be flexible on, on how we do that. Finally, sorry. Excuse me. The landscaping was another question. We absolutely plan on creating a landscaping plan, and we would ideally like to have privacy shrubs and/or trees on the south side or the 48th side of this property. Ideally, like six feet tall. I, I've got to research what, what the city requirements are. But we would ideally like to do that, and I know some of the neighbors in the neighborhood would prefer that. The neighbor to, the, the only neighbor here to the west at Five Bridge Lane, unfortunately, we were not able to connect with them directly. And they did have some concerns about, you know, how we would, how, how this, this leveling would work. We're open to whatever would work best with the city and with this neighbor. Ideally, we'd like to have it be, you know, flat, a gradual flat, running into, from their lot to our lot. So it's not creating drainage. If we had to remove that retaining wall at our cost, we'd certainly be open to that. We're, we're certainly flexible in, in how they want to approach that. And last but not least, I think there were some concerns about the house size and the height. And, you know, since our request is to reorient the house to Bridge, you know, it's my understanding that this house would be one of the lowest, if not the lowest elevation houses on, on Bridge Lane because it, it slopes downward towards Towns Road. We, we certainly would be lower than the only neighboring property. And it would, again, it would, I believe it would be the lowest or one of the lowest houses on Bridge Lane. And it would conform to all size and height requirements as Emily had pointed out at the, at the beginning. Thank you for letting me share those comments. Any comments or questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Scory. I will open it up to other commissioners for questions. Commissioner Olson, please.
Thank you. Can you just again explain why you're asking for this variance?
For the, to raise the first, the, the first floor level? Yeah, it's, it's because the setbacks. And so when I showed the existing house, the, the existing house is very narrow and very deep. And it, it goes, there is no backyard, literally. The, the driveway at the back of the house encroaches on the, the neighboring property. So there's literally So there's literally no backyard. And so it's split the backyard in two. So you basically don't have a backyard, you have two side yards.
So I'm still understanding why you need the variance request for the first floor.
Yeah, so we'd, we'd like to have a private patio. And to do that, the only way we do that would be on the Bridge Lane side of the house where that, the drainage from the neighboring property and, and, and Bridge Lane would drain right into it. And again, there's, the, the front yard setback is on Bridge Lane. And so the buildable area is a, is a narrow strip down the middle of the property. I can pull up that picture.
Okay, I'm just.
Maybe this will help. So if, if you look at this property here, can you see that? Okay? So here's the current house. And it's, it's, so this is the front here on, on the Towns. And it, it literally goes all the way back. This is the driveway that then goes all the way back and beyond the property line. So there's no backyard. This over here, it would be where the driveway is today. And so if you wanted a private patio, you'd have to put it on this side of the house where the drainage is. And then it would have to be 50, because this is the front yard setback on Bridge Lane. You're limited in, in what you can do in that area.
Okay.
Whereas if, if, and maybe if I contrast this, if, if we had the front of the house on Bridge, we could have the house right here. And then we would have, you know, this, this area back here is, is all, you know, one backyard.
Yeah, I understand what you're, you're saying with that. But I'm still understanding why it's requiring this variance, the one foot first floor variance.
Yeah, it's, it's very similar to the Sunny Slope example that I referenced before. I mean, certainly, they could have, they could have built that house on Hilltop Lane. But the City of Edina granted them a, a variance so that they could optimize that lot and the, the drainage of that lot so that they could have their, their front door on Sunny Slope.
So okay if I ask Emily a question, staff? Does it just have to be the applicant? Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Emily, could they, if they didn't have any variances, could they, they're meeting all the requirements. Could they be requesting to come in from Bridge? We'd have no control over that. Is that correct?
If they would meet all of the requirements, then no, a variance would not be required. If they could somehow design, get the grading and erosion control plan, all that to work, and variance wouldn't be needed, it would be allowed.
So they could come in and meet all the, meet all the variants, meet all the setback requirements and propose the access to be from Bridge? As long as they're meeting all the setback requirements?
Yes, that would need to be, the new driveway location would need to be approved by the city's engineering department. But as long as they're okay with that, then yes.
So the same thing goes with then the trees, those, they are huge and gorgeous trees. So again, if there are no variances required, there'd really, there's really no way for us to prevent them from removing trees.
Yes. I asked the city's forester to write up a memo because we were receiving a lot of questions about the trees. And to my understanding, the way the ordinance is written today, yes, all of those trees could be removed. Some of the trees would be required to be replaced. If it's within a certain distance from the house or within a certain distance from hard surface, those trees would need to be replaced. But you're correct, they would be able to be removed with the way the ordinance is written today.
Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Either for the applicant or for city staff? Commissioner Alkire.
Thank you, Kay. Ms. Bottiker, first name, but I think I have a question for you. I'm a little confused by the applicant's statement about the front yard setback being on Bridge for a house that has a Towns address? Am I misunderstanding that?
Um, no, that's correct. I can pull up here the survey and kind of explain that again. Let me see, I'll pull up my PowerPoint here and get to the right. So as you can see, there is, there is a property, an existing house to the west of this property that faces Bridge Lane. Due to that fact, there is a required setback off of Bridge Lane. That required setback would be to meet, to match the existing setback on the house to the west or the average of the block. There is not an adjacent house on either Towns Road or 48th Street West. So the required front yard setback in this instance is Bridge Lane. It is more common on corner lots that there would be more than one front yard setback or required front yard setback. In this instance, there is the one because there isn't adjacent houses on 48th Street or Towns Road.
I got it. So hypothetically, if the applicant were proposing to face the house on the 48th, for example, the front yard setback, what would the front yard setback be? Because the house to the west is facing Bridge.
Yep, it would be at 25 feet.
It'd be 25 feet.
Yep.
The backyard would remain 51.6, correct, Emily?
Yes, this would still, no matter how the house would be oriented, whether it's oriented off of Bridge Lane, Towns Road, or 48th Street, the required setback off of the Bridge Lane side or the Bridge Lane property line would be the 51 feet to match the property to the west.
Got it. One other thing, Ms. Bottiker. So for, to be clear about terminology, am I correct that the, the reason staff does not consider the five-foot grade chain, I think it's five feet, to be a practical difficulty is because a new house could be built elsewhere on the lot that did not face that challenge?
Yes, staff felt that there could, there's reasonable use on the property as it exists today. Or there could be a house that's designed to fit the city's requirements. The city is not requiring that the new house be oriented off of Bridge Lane.
Okay. And likewise, the unique tests. It is unique in that there are streets on three sides of it.
Correct, yes.
But that's not considered by staff to be compelling for a variance because a new structure could be built without a variance. Is that, is that the way we're looking at it, the staff is looking at it?
Yep, that's how staff wrote it in the staff report. If the planning commission does find that there is a reason to grant a variance in this instance, I did also outline findings for approval. And that unique circumstance was included in those findings.
All right, thank you. One final question for the applicant, Mr.
Scory, that's a funny one.
Did I pronounce it properly?
It's like story, but with a K, Scory. It's a funny one, yep.
Uh, thank you. Just a quick question. And I can understand the need for, the desire for a private patio or gathering space outdoors. Is, does the, does the northern portion of the lot currently have drainage issues that you're aware of and experiencing? I mean, is there, is there a real problem there today?
I don't believe that there is, no. The, the challenge is, is the house will be bigger. And so it's going to eat, it will eat up more of the space. And having it be on Bridge Lane is just, it's more, you're, you're optimizing more of the buildable space. I, I would, I would term it. But if, if the house were the same size, I, there'd, there'd absolutely be room. And I don't believe there are drainage. But because of the size of the house getting larger, then, then you're going to push further this way, which is, is closer to, you know, these, these significant elevation changes that I had pointed out.
If I can have a minute for drainage?
I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
Uh, this is Gennady. Can I just give a quick minute?
Gennady, who are you with?
Uh, Cornerstone Homes. I am the builder for Randy.
Please go ahead.
When I check the existing house, looked like in a new addition that these people did, you know, a while ago, there was freshly cut, you know, when I freshly, not, not when it was, not when it was done. But there was actually drain tile cutting into the new concrete after the addition was put in. So I am assuming there is probably some kind of a drainage. But we're still not owning the property yet. That was my question. That was my answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't explain that very well at the front end. I mean, we do not own the property today. We're, we're in the process of buying it. But that's, that's as, as much as we know.
All right. Thank you very much.
Other questions? I, I personally have one for Planner Bottiker. If this home were oriented towards Bridge Lane, how would the proposed first floor elevation compare to the other homes on that same side of the street on Bridge Lane?
Let me pull up the survey here. I guess there's a couple different, I can't speak exactly to how it would be designed necessarily. So assuming the grades could stay the same, the house currently sits at around 882. The existing house to the west, the elevation is roughly 889.
Okay, and the proposed is also at 889, is that correct?
The first floor, the proposed first floor, yes, is eight. Sorry, I don't have my compliance table in front of me here.
I believe we're one foot below. What we were, based on the survey that we have for Bridge Lane, that was at 890.9 for the front entry door. And we're going to be at a, a foot below that, basically, a little over a foot below that.
Yeah, the proposed first floor elevation is 889.7. Looks like right next to the foundation on the property to the west is 890.6.
And that would be five Bridge Lane?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a survey for that property, if you'd like to see it. It's a little dated, but I'm happy to put it on the screen if you'd like me to.
No, I don't think that's necessary for my purposes. Any other questions from other commissioners? Otherwise, I will open up our public hearing. All right, you can, it's not the final opportunity for that. And so we will go ahead and open up the public hearing for this tonight. So we'll hear from residents who would like to provide testimony. To participate, call in now at 1-800-374-0221 with conference ID 2450717. An operator will ask you for your name and street address. And then once you put, press star one, you will be placed in the queue to speak. Everyone is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please give your full name and address. And our staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they go over three minutes. And please remember, it is not necessary to provide testimony if you've already provided comments via voicemail or better together edina.org. We reviewed all of those prior to tonight's meeting. Please call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward. And with that, Dan, I think I remember there were potentially two people. So I will hand it over to you to facilitate our testimonies.
Sure, we do have now one caller on the line, not in queue yet. So again, if we want to take about a half a minute or so, okay. I needed three seconds and we did get that caller in the queue. And so if the operator on intercall can please unmute the line of Mr. Rolf Johnson. And Mr. Johnson, please state your name and address for the record, once you are clear to speak.
Mr. Rolf Johnson, your line is now open. Mr. Rolf Johnson, your line is now open.
Oh, sorry, how did I unmute? Let me start over. Rolf Johnson, 4717 Towns Road. Hello, everybody. And Randy, it was great meeting you last week or two weeks ago. And I just had a follow-up from our conversation. I did a little internet smoothing on just the, being able to provide protection for the trees should there be regrading and particular raising grades. And I think one of the terms that is used, I think that's what we have on our property, is a drywell. And, you know, if your Brian's are listening, maybe they can provide insights on how they, you know, the, the approach they took. But using a drywell definitely saved our tree that sits right in between our property or right on the line of our property and the Brian's property, some property directly to the north. So, and there are other solutions out there too. Looks like there's some PVC type of, of systems that look very inexpensive to the extent that you can. But I, and I don't know if the developer's on the line to respond, but I'd really appreciate any attempt you could make to preserve the, particularly the oak trees that add the canopy and then the character to the neighborhood. Thank you.
And Rolf, Rolf, thank you for calling in. I appreciate it. And I'm not sure when you joined, but I actually referenced exactly what you're talking about. And, you know, we look forward to learning more about it. I, I don't, I don't want to pretend to be an expert and it's a topic that I need to get smarter on.
Excuse me, we're still in the middle of the public hearing, if you could.
Oh, my apologies. I thought he was to me. My bad.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, uh, sorry.
Please go ahead with the next caller. There is one.
So we do have one caller who's on the line, who just joined us, but has not hit star one to enter the queue. So again, if we want to give that person a little bit of time and there they go. And so if the operator can please unmute the line of Mr. Ben Lieber. And Mr. Lieber, please state your name and address for the record, once you're given the go-ahead.
Name is Ben Lieber, L-E-B as in boy, E-R. And we are on Five Bridge Lane. We are to the house just to the west of this property.
Please go ahead and provide your testimony.
So my questions and concerns, yes, are, I know that you addressed the parking situation. It is not so much about the, the cars that the residents belong to. It's more so about guests and extra vehicles that just happen through life that end up parking there. And we do believe that there is going to be a substantial loss of street parking. And this will be, this is a very narrow street to begin with. So any sort of service trucks, especially on a Monday with trash service, already gets very congested. The other couple of things that I do want to point out is the, the, the potential buyer has been talking about drainage off of the retaining wall. And I can assure you, and we can have, we can pull up everything from yardscapes that we put in, in this house when we built about 10 years ago, a little over 10 years ago. There are certainly no drainage issues. We've never had any complaints of drainage issues, given the five or six feet difference in elevation. So to say or to claim that there are, there are potential drainage issues, I just, I just disagree with. And we can have yardscapes even give a testimonial about all the, all the drain tile and everything that we and everything that we put into. We put a substantial amount of drainage systems into that into that side hill because we want to make sure that we were not cascading any water into that property. The other question that I'm concerned that I have, and I'm still getting confused on, is this project sounds like it has already been approved to be put on Bridge Lane, and the variance is more so about the elevation change in the new proposed front yard, where it sounds like to me, given the information, that if the house was still facing Forty-Eighth Street, excuse me, then you could apply for a variance to have the backyard be manipulated back a little bit to gain yourself some space. And this patio that you speak of would actually be a private patio that I think would make a lot more sense than doing the proposed plan right now. I'm still confused on why they need to reorient the house to Bridge Lane when it seems like you could have the same type of house, the same size of house, given a possible variance to the backyard to now face Forty-Eighth Street, and you wouldn't have to spend the money or the time or the effort to even raise the elevation and maybe even save a few more trees.
Thank you so much for calling in, Mr. Lieber, and for your comments online, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The only callers we have are people who testified it already. So I don't know if you want to give it a few seconds just to let the broadcast catch up, but as of right now, there are no additional callers.
Okay, I'll give it 20 more seconds and then probe for a motion. All right, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
A second, Pat.
Liz, can we do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Alkire.
Hi.
Sorry, can you repeat that, Commissioner Alkire?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Olson?
Hi.
Commissioner Brubey?
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Your agent.
Hi. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. I do want to ask a question, kind of in follow-up to some of the testimony tonight, Commissioner, or Planner Bodiker. So regarding the orientation of the house, is the applicant able to orient the house in any direction that they choose without approval from the city?
As long as the house would meet the required setbacks for how the house is oriented, then yes. Like I said, if they're changing the driveway location and curb cut, that would need to be approved by the city's engineering department. And as long as the new location meets their requirements, then yes.
Okay, so there is no requirement that a house be oriented necessarily toward the front yard setback is, or anything like that, or where the house is today?
In this instance, there's streets on three sides, so there is opportunity to be oriented differently, but there is no requirement on what street it needs to be oriented towards.
Thank you. Any questions for? I'll open it up for questions or comments, given where we're at in the phase.
Hi, can I speak?
Who is that?
Sorry, it's Lou.
Oh, please, Commissioner Miranda.
Sure. My video's off, because I'm connecting on two bars. My internet's down, so you keep fading in and out, but as long as you can keep hearing me. I keep coming back to this being a self-created problem in that they are changing the orientation of the house. And as far as I can see, there's no required justification for it. So, you know, city staff seem to think that they could build a house in the current setbacks without changing the height. This ordinance was created in terms of housing, first floor height, I think because, you know, a lot of the diners were getting upset that houses were raised quite a bit, and five feet is quite a bit. And if there's a really good reason for it, then sure, I can see doing it. But again, to me, this feels very much like a self-created problem, so I'm having difficulty thinking of how, why I would want to approve this. Thank you.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, I pretty much, that's exactly what Commissioner Miranda was stating. This way I'm at, it just seems, you know, self-created. It's not, it's a rectangular lot. It's not, you know, we look at these and when the problem, it's, you know, they're pie-shaped, or they're irregular. There's something that, you know, kind of leads to, you know, to these situations. You know, my compliments to the presenters, to the applicant, I thought they made, they seemed to be genuinely committed to, I thought they did a very effective presentation, saying that they listened to what the concerns were and were trying to address them. I did not get, you know, persuaded past that point, you know, to go against what the city is, you know, their position to deny it. And I certainly feel like the applicant looks like they they should be able to work again with the city and come up with a solution where variances aren't required. So you're right, I'm kind of, I don't see, it seems like, like Lou said, it's a self-created problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayward?
I think I agree with what Commissioner Miranda had to say a lot. I also don't think like it's fully fleshed out. I think there's like certain things that just need like a stronger case for the full variance to be approved. Like, it doesn't really seem like a presentation for like a whole variance. Like, it feels like there's like, there should be more that like, it's telling me like that everything will like go well once it's fully built, especially with the trees. I think the applicant said that he'd like look more into the trees, but like, if he's moving for this whole variance, then like, I feel like he should have already done that. So that's my comment and our concern.
Thank you. Commissioner Brubey, I saw a hand going up.
So I guess what I'm leaning towards is they're not asking for a variance on the height. And while I appreciate that it's, you can make the argument that it's a self-created issue. You know, they're, they're, they, they're trying to build a home that works well facing bridge, and that's what they've decided. The elevation of the front door, if it's not impacting the height, I guess I'm less concerned about it, and wouldn't be concerned about giving a variance. It'd be a different thing if this variance would have forced them to also ask for a variance on the height. But overall, the height of the home is within compliance, and so I think I'm more influenced by that. And it is an issue when you're trying to build a home that has an elevation that's, you know, difficult to work with, the way you want to orient your home. I also think the applicant did a really great job of addressing the concerns that we had seen emailed to us, and then also voicemail that was sent to us, between the trees and the drainage, addressing the driveways, the construction traffic, which would be a temporary issue. No one likes construction, but it's, you know, it happens. It most likely is going to happen one way or the other, no matter what you do on the slot, right? At least based on what we've heard tonight. And then being really mindful about landscaping. Further, the argument that, you know, there's going to be parking, and it's a narrow lot, and, you know, for garbage trucks and things like that. I do appreciate that. I live on a narrow lane myself, and traffic, I think, is always an issue. It's less of an issue when the home that you're talking about is at the very end of the street. So, you know, you can always have parking around the corner. You know, they've got, they've got three sides. They can park on any one of those sides. So I guess, to me, that's less of an argument from the neighbors. No one likes parking, no one likes traffic, but it isn't really a given that that's going to be an issue here anyway. So I don't think that should be considered. So I, I'm not opposed to this argument at this point, but I appreciate this discussion because I can see, I can really see both sides of it.
Commissioner Alkire?
Thank you, Commissioner Brubey. I think that was really interesting. I hadn't thought about it quite that way. Even considering that, though, from my perspective, I don't, I don't think that the applicant has shown a practical difficulty that's not a matter of choice or a unique characteristic of the lot that prevents anything, once again, beyond a matter of choice. So living by the ordinances that the city's put out, it's really, I think, I'm having a hard time agreeing to the variance. We haven't talked anything, we haven't talked this evening about the third test on the character of the neighborhood. I'd be interested if anybody had any thoughts on that. I'm kind of of two minds of that. I'm familiar with this neighborhood, and it's on Towns and Forty-Eighth. The streets are wide, and all the houses face to the street, and it's a very traditional, very traditional-looking part of our town. And it would be different to have the side of a very large house on Towns. I'm not feeling strongly enough about this to say it would be good or bad, but it would surely be different in that very local view of the city. I'm not sure if that's persuasive, but I would be interested if anybody, if anyone else has any thoughts on that particular test. As it stands, overall, I'm having a hard time supporting this variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Alkire. Commissioner Olson, I think you might be the only one left if you would like to make comments.
No, I just, I'm not really convinced that this variance is necessary. I think that they could work with the lot and orientation and not have to receive this variance. I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. I think, personally, I think that this is a, this is an interesting one, right? Because, I mean, anytime that we get a lot of outpouring from the neighborhood, it definitely captures my attention. The themes that we heard from neighbors, you know, focused a lot on the trees and on traffic, and in some cases, you know, massing and impact on the character of the neighborhood. And I think I love, I love having that engagement. I love that people are are reaching out and making their voices heard. I also think that those elements, while like very important, right? Like, I love trees, and I think that it is a staple to this neighborhood. I don't think that those are things that we should be considering when we're talking about a first floor elevation variance. Those things aren't necessarily impacting it. You know, if this house wasn't going for the variance, but it was, everything else were the same, there would be nothing that we'd be reviewing, and the same trees could still go down. They could still choose to orient on that side of the street. They could still have the driveway facing that way. I would hope that, I mean, maybe it works out that whoever is getting garbage at the other residences would get garbage here, so there wouldn't be any increased traffic from the garbage day. But, I mean, I do pay attention, obviously, when people respond, and so I appreciate everyone who made their voices heard on that. You know, the things that I think stick out are those that are relevant to or related to the fact of the first floor height, which to me is, what are, what are the other homes on that street? On Bridge Lane, what is the first floor elevation? And it doesn't seem that this is out of the norm for that, right? The house Five Bridge Lane is one foot above. On the other side, right? I don't know that the requirement of showing the practical difficulties with complying with this, given the shape of the lot, has been met. And so I guess I do feel split, and I can see things both ways. And so I just, I don't think that this is an easy decision when we're thinking about this unique piece of land, and the way that a house could be oriented three different ways, and that there are ways for a house to be built here that would fully comply. Any other thoughts or comments from commissioners?
If I may speak again, Commissioner Miranda?
Yes, please, Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, yeah, again, I'd like to point out, you know, that there's a reason for the ordinance about the first floor elevation. I might have said height before, but it's first floor elevation. You know, and the point is, when you, when you raise it too much, you know, a house kind of looms over the neighbors. And while the height may be the same on other houses on Bridge Lane, it's really the back of this house as it's proposed to be oriented. That's really going to loom over the neighborhood. And we've, we've had enough teardown of the neighborhood where they had these huge houses, and it did really loom over the neighborhood. And it's, it really does change the character of the neighborhood. And of the house, we're talking about the elevation of the first floor. And I think this is a perfect case of why this ordinance was created in the first place, and I think it's important that we deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda. I did, as I'm sure many other commissioners did, drive through the neighborhood and really try and understand the intricacies of the lot and the character of the neighborhood. I don't know, this is, this is a tough one. So if there's no other comments, I will welcome a motion from anyone.
I move to deny the variance based on the staff report. I will second.
Liz Olson, roll call, please.
Commissioner Alkire?
Hi.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Olson?
Hi.
Commissioner Brubey?
Hi.
Commissioner Miranda?
Hi.
Your agent.
Hi. Okay, this variance request has been declined. Thank you very much for coming tonight and for presenting and for the work that you put into this. Also want to thank all of the community members who wrote in and made their voices heard. So thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on in our agenda, we have our reports and recommendations. First up is the Cahill Area District Plan RFP, which will be presented. I thought it was going to be by Assistant Planner Ocker, but I might be wrong.
I was told that was something that you were going to take care of.
All right, then I just, that's thank you for confirming. I thought that I had read that in the packet, but I was misunderstanding. But thankfully, Commissioner Alkhair is ready and excited to make a presentation.
Yes, good evening. If you can't hear me, Chair Agnew was saying there was, I was like, oh, audio's good now. Okay, great. So if you can't hear me, start waving or something if something goes wrong with the, with the audio connection. So in your packet, you received a draft of the RFP for the Cahill District Area Plan. Just start off with a quick recap of the process so far. So you'll recall on November 15th, we had the community kickoff meeting, which many or most or all of you were, were able to attend. On December 30th, the Planning Commission approved the working group members. And on January 31st, we had our first working group meeting. It was mostly, it was on Zoom, it was mostly get acquainted kind of content. And MJ did a nice orientation for us. We discussed the expected timeline of the project. And we closed the meeting with a discussion of the RFP. And each of the members of the working group had 48 hours to provide feedback on the RFP. We got some good comments from the group on the scope and areas of emphasis. Got some ideas about how to proceed to give more background to potential consultants. Like you will have noticed in the draft, that we've linked the kickoff meeting documentation in the RFP to give the potential consultants a more background on the subjects. And we also talked about, also got some suggestions from working group members about how to manage limited resource. So that brings us up to today. The, the draft in the packet is mostly standard RFP content and structure. It'll be familiar to those of you who are involved in comp plan or SAP work. There are two things I wanted to mention in particular. And then we can discuss as needed or Kate and I can address any questions that you may have. First, we have included a summary of the kickoff meeting. As I mentioned, we wanted to share the community feedback that we already have collected so that potential consultants have that in mind as they prepare the proposals. And secondly, and probably most importantly, something that has been a subject of a lot of discussion over the past few weeks, we have comparatively limited resources. And we've attempted in the RFP to adjust the scope to reflect that. So while the process and the content of the written deliverables is fairly standard, we have modified the level of in-person engagement from consultants to attempt to manage costs. So for example, there are fewer working group meetings for consultants to attend. The working group will continue to meet. Our plan is two times a month, but our expectation is the consultant would attend one time per month, for example. There'll be two community meetings in the plan. Originally, we were thinking more like two or three. And the working group members, Kate and I, and perhaps others, will be doing the presentations to the planning commission and to the city council in an attempt to reduce the resource requirements from outside. So all in all, generally, the working group will have more responsibility than I think is typical. So that's something to be aware of as you review the RFP. And it will certainly change the way the project goes. But we're confident that we've got a really strong working group and, and will be able to do the job in a quality way that the district deserves. So with the approval of the planning commission this evening, hopefully, the RFP will be posted this week. And it'll put us on track to have interviews in March. And there's a complete project, well, approximate but complete project timeline on page five of the RFP. So with that introduction, I just open it up for discussion or questions or anything that a planning commission wants to talk about on this subject.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Alkhair. Especially because I led you astray in who would be presenting. So I appreciate your, your quick adjustment to that. I, I hope everyone had the opportunity to walk through it. I do want to add just one note for, for probably a particular area for attention. Just because I know everyone has gone through this process and so I value everyone's feedback. But we went back and forth quite a bit on, under response guidelines and deadline. So specifically on page, well, there's no page numbers, but the last page of the, the RFP in points six and seven. Six asks for anticipated cost and timeline of the project. One of our working group members suggested that including this as a element to respond to could suggest that there's more flexibility than there truly is in the budget for the project. So if we're asking them for the budget, when we already state the budget, like, what, what are we going to get back in a response from that? On the other hand, right, it, there could be value. Because if, if the reality is that they're saying something like, there's just no way that we could do it in this budget or we can do it in half the price, whatever it is, right? Like that would be relevant information to have. So I don't know if, if everyone kind of went through it with that fine tooth of a comb, but that's something that I specifically would like a lens on of if there's cleaning up or refinement that we should make in points six and seven to, to guide people to responding in a way that's meaningful. But you can also just provide feedback overall. Commissioner Olson?
Well, just to respond what you were just saying, I think it's, you know, you're going to get, I was just looking again. Okay, so we're saying we, they can submit questions. Okay, we should probably give like a deadline for that. But anyway, of course, I'm looking at this because this is my world, so. But the questions you will get are, what's the budget? So, you know, I think it's great that you, you say, here's, here's what we have. We've got $75,000. So I don't, you know, I think what, a good way to request the cost is just for them to provide, you know, their scope and their fee with that. So that doesn't necessarily open it up that they're going to come in at $100,000. And they, they could also propose, you know, additional tasks for, you know, for negotiation or that, you know? But I, I, I think that that's, it's okay that you do state the 70,000, 75,000, because you're going to get asked that. And it's nice to know what, you know, what you're supposed to, you know, the budget, what your scope is trying to meet. I guess one of the, the questions I had, again, does not have page numbers. So it is, sorry, I'm just trying to see what I could, under the consultant's scope of work on that page. So let's see, bullet point. So let's see, the third bullet, leading or assisting with the implementation of the community engagement plan. Okay. And then we have details below about what those, what that engagement plan should, okay? Okay. Sorry. I think I just answered my question that I had.
Okay.
Good. Sorry. I just, I did, I just answered my question.
Wonderful. And then maybe just another note back regarding, you know, kind of the, the working group member who was providing feedback is they said, you know, there's going to be a lot of information that they're putting into these 10 pages already. And so is it even worth, like, spending time or devoting time to restating the cost and timeline when we're already providing that? So, but to your point to getting that confirmation that they're able to stick within it might be what we're looking for. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think it's always nice to give them the opportunity that they can even, you know, provide like a different way or some unique way of looking at it or something that we haven't covered in the RFP.
Thank you. Any other reactions? We put a lot of time into this, so I'm thinking that the, the silence is glowing approval. Okay, can we have a motion then?
I move to approve the RFP as submitted in the packet.
I second. Or did it already get seconded?
I second. Thank you. Liz, roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Alkhair?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bruby?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Carrie Agnew?
Aye. The RFP and the next steps have been approved. So thank you all. Ah, let's see. Next is the second, under the reports and recommendations, for our sketch plan review for 4620 77th Street West, and that will be provided by Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, I'm pulling up my PowerPoint. Does everybody see that?
Yes, it's not in sharing mode, though, if that was your intention. Now it is.
Okay. Excellent. So we have a sketch plan this evening with a site that you're all familiar with, in the Pentagon Park area. Sketch plans, as you know, you're asked to provide non-binding comments or feedback to the developer who potentially could make a redevelopment application in the future. So again, the site is in Pentagon Park. It is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential uses with a maximum density of up to 75 units an acre. Site is guided mixed development district, which allows residential, office and retail uses. The property to the south has been zoned for PUD to allow an apartment development. So this project before you this evening is actually considered phase two for that project that is currently under construction directly to the west. That's the 408 unit apartment. And it was zone PUD 23. So this would be phase two. It is to construct a similar in height apartment building with 276 units. There is an existing office building on the site that would remain and an office building that would be removed. One of the key elements with this project is the provision of a new entrance to Fred Richards Park. So that would be off of 77th in this location, east of the office building that would remain. As you're aware, the current access, access to the park is off of Park Lawn, behind the Pentagon Park development. The idea is we want a more, a more visible access to the park and off of 77th is the goal. So on the screen now, this is the apartment that was approved last year, currently under construction. To the, to the east would be the new apartment building. This is demonstrating, well, existing pedestrian connection off or, or will be with that first phase. So with this project, there would be two additional access points to the park. The one I mentioned, that would be a vehicular and pedestrian access. And to the, to the west side of the office building would be a wooner type shared access into the park. Little bit of detail, so the applicant worked with our engineering department to develop this main entrance off of 77. Keeping in mind that the current property owner, Hillcrest, would like to maintain the surface parking for the existing office buildings located adjacent to that new entrance. So again, it would be a two-way drive into the park with a sidewalk and with landscaping on both sides. This is a quick visual of what that may look like. As you know, this is located within the Greater Seltdale District. So we did have Mick Johnson of Architecture Field Office provide a review. One of his comments was suggesting beefing up the landscaping along this entrance to the park. That, that AFO review memo was emailed out to the commission this evening, as well as the applicant who's prepared to respond to the, the comments as well. Again, here's that new vehicular road, the wooner, and the proposed 276 units. Additional comments that Mr. Johnson made. He suggested the potential to reduce the width of this wooner to provide more green space and landscaping within that area. And also suggested the potential to, or at least for the applicant, to consider doing some liner buildings along this east side, along the, along the wooner. Could be townhomes, could be retail, commercial type uses to activate that space. So what this request would require would be a rezoning from the MDD zoning district to PUD 23. Would be an extension of that existing, or that, that, yeah, that existing PUD to the west. The setbacks in height are very similar to, to conform to that, to those PUD standards. The density is in the, the middle of the range due to the office building remaining on the site. They have pledged that they would provide affordable housing units within the project. They've not settled on whether it would be 10% of the units at 50% AMI or 20% of the units at 60%. That would be, they would settle on that with any formal application. And I mentioned the, the design guidelines with the, following of the design guidelines with the most significant being the improved connections to Fred Richards Park. The green space actually is a, quite a significant increase from 22% on this site to 44%, with the potential for maybe more. A traffic and parking study would be required. Again, the heights are consistent with the PUD to the west. And the applicant would be required to conform with the city's sustainable building policy that was recently approved. So with that, I will stop there, answer any questions you may have. The applicant and developer, again, is the, the same developer who's doing the apartments to the west. Kurt Gunsberry and Jason Lord are here and have a presentation as well to get into a little more detail of the project. With that, I will stop there for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Director Teague. Question, Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, questions for Carrie. That public, that, that new entry to Fred Richards, if you can call up. It looks like that exists between two existing buildings, buildings? Yes. Now, will that be, become a public street or is it just still private property with access to the park?
Yeah, it would still be, it would be private property, but we would get a public easement over it to provide that access, access for the public to get into Fred Richards Park. There's currently an easement on the property to the north. We haven't settled on how that, how that would work out with the, with the property owner now. But it could be, we vacate that. But it could be, we vacate that easement on the north side in favor of this. So those details would still need to be worked out, but it would likely be a public easement over the space to gain access for the city.
What, I have the other picture, it's the project narrative view, it's kind of a plan for Dieview. And so the public, the buildings for Fred Richards, the existing, that looks, would that, are there any plans for that to become some sort of, I mean, to remain a kind of a permanent, some sort of facility for events or something like that? I mean, so this new, this proposed access could be a very important route using however that existing facility for Fred Richards would be used in the future versus coming in from the east?
Yes, the Parks Director and Parks Department have been very involved with the location of this, comparing it to the Fred Richards master plan. That's been approved, just looking for funding to make that happen. But this access point, you know, we would need to, the city would need to extend that within to that parking area when the park develops. So that would take place with that, with the Fred master plan. But this is a, this location does work out for that master plan.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. That was all.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any other questions. So with that, we can go ahead and welcome the applicant on, or the, presenter. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, and thank you, Carrie, for the really thorough introduction and overview. And I just want to apologize for my dog. She is now in a different room. Sorry, she interrupted earlier. I just wanted to say hello to the Commissioners, a couple of you I haven't met before, including Commissioner Hayward. So, welcome to the team. Great to see young faces on the Commission and really cool to hear your feedback, too. As most of you know, we are Solheim. I'm Kurt Gunsberry and this is my partner, Jason Lord, who will be doing most of the presentation tonight. We build sustainable, beautiful communities that our residents love, and we are bringing these communities to Edina. We are a local company based in Minneapolis, and we've completed about twenty similar projects in the past twelve years in the Twin Cities. We're currently building the next door building, like Carrie mentioned, and I think of, which you guys are mostly familiar with. It's four hundred and eight apartments, and we're excited to further enliven what we would call a new neighborhood in Edina, because it really is becoming a different place. As I think most of you know, we add a lot of density next door, a lot of sustainability within our building design, and a lot more air, light, and green space within our planned project than exists currently. We also added bike access to the park and a walking trail into the park, or we're planning to complete that once our building is completed in about a year and a half. A quick overview of what we see as the key issues, and Carrie alluded to this, and Commissioner Strauss, I think, also had some really great questions about this. This project's really an opportunity to, one, replace an aged and vacant office building and replace it with new naturally occurring affordable housing that the community really needs. And I'd say, potentially more importantly, for the long term, for the neighborhood, we're opening up two new pathways into the park that don't really exist right now. One is this proposed wooner, which would really be more of a pedestrian access into the park. And two is the vehicular route that Carrie described. And there is a sidewalk there, but it really will be primarily a vehicular route, and that's what we're designing it to be, that will provide a lot of much-needed access and really unlock something that the city doesn't currently have. This is kind of a once-in-a-generation opportunity. The, like I said, the office building is vacant, and that allows us to potentially tear it down. If Hillcrest were to start filling it with tenants, all of a sudden, the value goes way up, and economically, it can't be torn down. By us tearing it down, it kind of unlocks this ability to work with Hillcrest to create a public vehicular route into the park that allows people to park in the existing park parking lots and make use of the existing or former clubhouse buildings. Let's see, this right now is a sketch plan. As you can see, Jason is actually, Jason did all the architecture on this. We haven't even worked with an architecture firm yet. Jason is an actual architect. So he put together all these diagrams, and we just want to remind you, it is a sketch plan. We really want your feedback, just like we had on the previous project, very valuable feedback. We really took it very seriously and to heart and tried to answer all of your concerns when we came back to, for the next round of an official approval. Key things to keep in mind for this site, which I think you're somewhat familiar with, but we just want to remind you. The water table is an enormous issue here. The site used to be a very large swamp, wetlands, and we've had real difficulties already with the construction we're doing on the neighboring site, working with the watershed district and the City of Edina to make sure it all complies with long-term flood planning, et cetera. That is a really big constraint for us, because water table means we can't put parking underground. So things like the recommendation that we add liner housing or more commercial to the first floor of our building, that would come at the expense of parking. So while we're open to it, we really have to remember that we have to have enough parking stalls in this building to serve the units that we need to build to make it economically feasible. So that's one big constraint to keep in mind. A second thing to keep in mind is the existing building on this parcel that will stay is full of office tenants who are currently parking. That will remain a separate PID for Hillcrest. It won't be our property. We won't control it. We really don't have the option to alter it in any way or add or subtract uses. That's really completely up to Hillcrest, what they decide to do. The big benefit of us unlocking the site really is to add that vehicular access into the park. So we have to keep that in mind, that that's the overriding benefit to the city and the neighborhood is that we're adding this access. No matter what we do with our building, that will be the long-term great benefit that, like I mentioned, is really a generational opportunity that won't come around again for a long time. And then the final thing I'd say constraint-wise is to add both the wooner and this vehicular path into the park. It really constrains what we can do on the site. No matter how pretty we want to make it, no matter how much landscaping, how much we want to tug and pull the building around, we're going to be extremely constrained by these other very laudable goals that we all want to achieve for the community. So with that, I'm going to introduce Jason, and Jason's going to take it from here with better visuals, probably less talk, and happy to take questions along the way. So thanks again for allowing us to present tonight.
Good evening Commissioners, and thank you Carrie for the presentation, and thank you Kurt as well for the introduction. And as Kurt mentioned, I think the big overarching thing is, it's really a collaboration, the sketch plan between, you know, us with Solheim developing for Phase Two, Hillcrest with the existing four thousand six hundred office building that will remain, as Kurt said, and the city's engineering department with, you know, finding an access to Fred Richards Park. And the main design philosophy with this was really to build on a lot of the success and feedback and ideas that we got for Phase One, the design philosophy of weaving housing into the park and porosity throughout the housing to create a neighborhood feel as well. So that was our really vision for this site. I think our constraints, as Kurt mentioned, this site is sixty percent or so the width of the Phase One site. So just that narrow width in and of itself is a constraint, but I think that opens up a lot of opportunities. And one of the main opportunities we saw was this gradient of entrances and access to the park, where we can really have access at different speeds and for different users to make a complete network for everyone in the park. We have with Phase One, that we're building already, the bike path and vegetated parkway entrance. We heard from this committee and the city council the need for respite areas and park areas along that entrance. So that's staying very green and park-like in landscape with an existing patio remaining and other pieces that's focused on bikes and joggers and people enjoying the parkway. And then there's also the need to really activate Seventy-seventh Street and get some vibrancy into the area. And so that's what we're planning between this Phase Two and the four thousand six hundred building with the addition of the wooner and the common areas and all the corner spots of Phase Two, to really activate that and give a pedestrian streetscape energy to that. And then there's also the need for vehicular access for the park. So I like to say we've got ten mile an hour bike access, five mile an hour pedestrian street, and twenty mile an hour street area, and they're all separated in sort of micro blocks. And then we've also designed this building to be two separate buildings with porosity between it. That was an important comment that we heard from the Commission for Phase One, to make it seem like a smaller building. And so we've got that planned for Phase Two, where the U-shaped building facing the park is lower, you know, four stories of wood frame above parking. The front building engages and references Seventy-seventh Street at seven stories. And that was really the main philosophy, to continue that massing of Phase One and do that for Phase Two. With the added challenge of the parking is going to be more rectangular under both pieces of the building, and that will be planned to have as much mounding and weaving of landscape as we can on the site with that parking and active uses on the corners. Because the corner is always the most important and along the pathway of wooner for that piece. So those are our overarching goals for the site, and we have the site plan here. And I just realized it's not shared. So let me see, I don't know if I can share a screen on this, or maybe Carrie could pull up the site plan for the discussion as well. But that, you know, those are our design philosophies, and we we really wanted to create, you know, a building that builds on Phase Two and iterates and even make it even better with more spaces for the public and community, more access to the park, and build two hundred and seventy-six more homes that people love adjacent to Fred Richards Park. With that, I'll just open it up to any questions and discussions that anyone may have.
Thank you so much. Did you have unique imagery that you wanted to share? We can try and make sure you have the...
I have the same presentation that Carrie has as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Any, let's start with any questions. Were any questions, clarifications that anyone wanted to get? Commissioner Alcare?
All right, thank you both of you so much for the presentation this evening. I guess a clarifying question or something I'm not sure I'm totally up to speed with you on yet is, so I get the vehicle access to the park, fantastic. I don't, I'm not clear on the rationale or the intent with the wooner. So why is it a wooner instead of just a pedestrian access or something else?
It's a great, great question. The four thousand six hundred building has two entrances, so the existing office building. And so the wooner is a way to blend between the housing that's to the, thank you Carrie, yes, to the housing that's to the west and the four thousand six hundred building to the east. And so that's where we'll have, you know, there'll be patios for the office building out. There'll be active uses, potential commercial space for our Phase Two in this orange wooner area. You know, we envision outdoor seating, more plaza space. And we thought that, you know, twenty-four-seven can make a really welcoming pedestrian experience. You know, sometimes at night or in the evening, you know, the bike path is a great experience, but it's not quite the same as active uses, more fronting a space. So that's where we tried to take the constraint of the office building being there and turn it into an opportunity to create something that feels like a mixed-use street and has outdoor seating elements and, you know, a place to mingle between different types of uses. And also have that as the access to the park.
Okay, so just thank you for, make sure I'm understanding. So in that part, is there vehicle traffic also?
Yes, there would be some. There's access, there would be an access to our garage and phase, for the Phase Two project, but we're still working through the exact location for that garage access. And then there are the, I believe it's about eight or ten surface parking stalls for the four thousand six hundred office building.
Okay. So would that be the, are you expecting that would be the main or only entrance for vehicles for the Phase Two building?
That would be the main entrance. And I think there's been some discussion about perhaps coming in from the back to the parking garages. As Kurt mentioned, the water table and layering is quite complex, and there is quite the slope along the four thousand six hundred buildings. We have a couple of different concepts, but we're still waiting to vet out with more engineering for where vehicular parking would access. But the goal would be to minimize as much pedestrian conflict as we can while still getting cars into the parking garage for Phase Two.
Okay, thanks very much.
Any other questions? Or presenters tonight? I'm seeing any.
Come on, you guys.
Carrie, would you mind pulling that back down? So with that, I guess then I will, I will open it up. Who would like to kick us off with some comments and feedback? Commissioner Olson?
I'll get started. Well, I like the connectivity to Fred Richards Park and what you're doing with that. I, you know, I always try to emphasize reading Mick Johnson's memo and trying to address that as best possible. You guys keep all, everyone keeps going black on me. Is that me or is that you guys? Is that happening to you too?
It's not happening for me.
Just keep talking. Okay, as long as you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. So, yeah, I would just try to, you know, I understand about the high water table and the parking and the impact, but you know, just, you know, next time you come before us, just address those as best possible, because I always agree with what he's proposing. I just thought, you know, it really does fit in with the whole picture, what we were looking with the Greater Southdale. And I know, you know, I'm still trying to see kind of some of that transparency from Seventy-seventh through to the park, but is that mostly occurring with the wooner? And not through the building itself, right? Am I?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, yeah. So, you know, it's, again, this is sketch, so you can't really show a lot, and which is what we want. But I think just, again, be real sensitive to what you're doing with the activity along Seventy-seventh, you know, in between the other buildings and how it's, you know, fitting in with Fred Richards. I guess, you know, just, I'm looking forward to seeing what you do with that. But I like it. I, you know, I'm just, I'm happy to see, you know, activity, development finally happening here, and I'm fine with the height of the buildings, too. I think that totally fits with what we're trying to achieve in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, just, you know, because we've looked at this particular site for some months, years, and, you know, these new projects, I mean, we've talked about it, I think we're seeing a consistent, you know, our interest being met and, you know, so we're not reinventing, you know, what we're trying to do here. But the two things that are particular in this... But the two things that are particular in this is the, the new proposed vehicle road, vehicular road and the Wu-Nerf. I think the explanation of how that Wu-Nerf is that kind of transition between a commercial building and the apartment, I love that, the idea of using that Wu-Nerf to make that transition from a building of one use, which is very different. And I, I could see whatever efforts you can put in on articulating for both of those access points and that connection to Fred Richards kind of, I think, just absolutely redoes and repurposes that whole building and sort of makes the old clubhouse and the whole park kind of work with an access that, otherwise, that was always my, talking about Fred Richards, you had to know how to get back there, you know, to find that clubhouse. And, yeah, I think those, that's what particularly affects me about those two, that Wu-Nerf and that new vehicle that we have to develop. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Miranda.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to repeat what Commissioner Olson said about Nick's comments. I mean, we, he has spent a lot of time on the South Dale guidelines and he has a lot of good comments. In relation to that, I'd like to say in terms of the bike trail connection, pedestrian connection of the particular part of the road, in those, all need to feel like primary entrances and I worry that the bike and the pedestrian access will feel like, you know, secondary things that are not, you know, as welcoming, for example, or that feel like after, I want to make sure those feel very much, if it looks like a driveway or if it acts like a...
Commissioner Miranda, I'm not, I'm not able to actually hear you.
Primarily for cars. You know, Wu-Nerf, it feels like a real...
Commissioner Miranda, I'm going to interrupt you. I think we're having really bad connection.
The picture that you provided is great, and I just hope that it matches that sort of thing. And as Nick said, in that picture that you have next to pedestrian plaza, am I...
Yeah, I think, I don't, I don't think it's just me. I think we've lost you now, Commissioner Miranda. So, sorry about that. I don't know if there's any way for us to get better connectivity, if you want to maybe try dropping and calling back in again.
Okay, you can't hear me now?
It's been coming and going, if you want to try again.
Okay, I switched to a different connection.
Okay. Yeah, good, try again.
Is it better now? Okay, you guys seem a little clearer. Anyway, yeah, stop me if I, if I'm, if you can't hear me. Actually, I want to...
I think it went back out, Commissioner Miranda.
How about, I'll paraphrase, and, oh, he's gone now, sorry. I guess big picture, we want to make it, make all those entrances feel like primary entrances. And I think we'll address that in our next plan. Again, though, the biggest constraint for us is we just don't have the width to do that and preserve all the required parking for the office buildings. So it's either going to need to be creative or simple, and it's probably more likely going to be simple than creative, I think, at this point, given that you just have to have a wide enough path for two cars to pass. So, but we will address that in our final plans more directly. Thank you.
Commissioner Alcare.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda is kind of being back in again. In the meantime, just I'll share a couple of thoughts. Really excited about your interest in participating in the affordable housing part of the program, very important to the city. Can you just clarify, Phase One has bike access to the park, doesn't it? Yes, yeah. Okay. So this is incremental in addition to what we're already accomplishing on Phase One. And access to the park. Okay, great, that's fantastic. The vehicle and the pedestrian access to the park in Phase Two, really, really exciting as you, as you mentioned at the outset. Like Commissioner Olson, the height seems fine to me, the water table is what it is, we'll just have to deal with it the best that we can. I think the thing that I'm really interested to see more about in future conversations is the Wu-Nerf. I have a, I think, it's just me, but different people seem to have different definitions and different visions for what that actually means. And it seems, you know, if you call it a Wu-Nerf and put a vehicle through it, pretty soon it's a street. And I, and I just am really interested to see what that looks like. And I understand simple versus clever or creative, but I'm just have to see what it looks like. If it acts like a street, it's going to be a street, no matter what we call it. So I'm interested to see how, how that comes together in the future. Overall, really excited about the, about the project. Thanks for sharing with us tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Alcare.
Go ahead, Commissioner Burby.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much to add. You know, as my other commissioners have mentioned, we're pleased to see progress here. And again, you know, as much connectivity as you can get in there and, and I appreciate that you need to allow cars to get through for parking, you know, it's, it's a fact of life to a certain extent. But, you know, if you can do what you can to really focus on the bicycles and the walking because though we know we, we do need, you know, to accommodate cars, hopefully that'll be less and less important going forward. So we're building for the future and hopefully that'll be something that we won't be putting forward as our, as our primary focus in the future. And, and the affordable housing is great, really applaud you for that. And then you know, you know all the others from your, your previous conversations with us, you know, the greenscape and landscaping and the, you know, as we mentioned, the connectivity. So, thank you for that. We'll look forward to seeing the next phase of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Burby.
So my initial reactions are like, love, love the green space. I think that this is, this is a really great place in our city and I'm excited to see the continued evolution. You know, this is always something that I'm going to ask for, but as you're planning out the parking to decouple the parking from the rental of the units, this is really something that we're going to need to do as we decrease our dependency on, on parking in general. And it also helps with the affordability of those homes too. So really important for multiple reasons. I also, given, you know, kind of this is mixed use and we're really thinking outside the box here, I think, too, I would love to see something that's going to draw people to this area too, to the Wu-Nerf, to the community areas from the pathways. Just thinking about how I've run through that park or, you know, I haven't biked yet through the park, but I'm not that much of a biker, but I know that there are a lot of bikers to that park. Are there ways that we can draw people into this area? And so I don't know if that, you know, a small coffee shop or a bistro or a wine bar or just something, you know, obviously I wouldn't suggest something like a, a full-on, like, I don't know, liquor store or something like that, right? Given the, the proximity to the housing and thinking about people living in this building. But is there something that could have, you know, somewhat limited hours that would draw people into this community who, you know, would be walking and biking already from a pedestrian standpoint? So thinking, you know, not a large grocery store that would, you know, necessitate more parking or anything like that, but really something geared towards those who are living here already, those who are working in those offices and those who are pedestrians and walkers kind of already from that park side, I think would just be really interesting.
Great feedback, thank you.
Yeah. I was just really excited to see whatever this next phase is.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're right in line with you on those comments. We don't know how to do it quite yet. We do know that we're adding about 1,000 people to this neighborhood and it's complementing existing office that'll stay there. And it really just becomes a question of how do we, you know, make it all knit together in a way that's, you know, safe enough to have a real Wu-Nerf, to Commissioner Alcare's comments, and still have it be something that's functional as a community and not an irritant to an existing community and make everybody play well together, right? So I think that's the, that's our design challenge and we just have to work around that damn water table and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you so much for presenting tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments at all? Any other thoughts? Okay, well, thanks so much for taking the time to let us present tonight. We really appreciate it. And as we've said before, we've just really enjoyed working with you folks and the City of Edina. We feel really lucky to have such clear feedback and direction and engagement. So we really appreciate it and we're grateful for the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. Good care. Oh, I do see Lou Miranda. Hi, Lou. All right. Let's see, well, given, Lou, did, was there, we just kind of like closed up the comments, but literally 12 seconds ago, if you had anything that you, now that you're here, you wanted to contribute.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. But, yeah, the, the main thing is that I want, I'd like those entrances, other than the motorist entrance, to also feel like primary entrances. And it's important, as Commissioner Olson talked about Nick's comments, it's important that a Wu-Nerf not be a driveway and that it be a Wu-Nerf. And so your images look really great, but as you can see in the images and as Nick called out, those vibrant places because there are things to do there. So that's important to have. Thank you.
And we heard that all perfectly well, so thank you. All right. And thank you both for staying on to catch that feedback as well.
Absolutely.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is chair and member comments. Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, well, I guess my first comment would be that I'm glad that we now have US Internet in Edina, because I just, I just signed up literally yesterday, so I'm still using Comcast and we can see where that's going. So anyway, but besides that, I just want to point out, there's been a lot of comments about, I don't know, the Nine Mile Creek Trail and whether it's going under Highway 169 and when that's going to happen. So I just got an email, let's see here, an email from Andrew Hyer, who's, who's a tireless advocate for the Nine Mile Creek Trail. And he said that the construction has started on the Highway 169 underpass. So, so instead of going over 169 and taking the long way there and being in traffic and everything, they're, they're currently constructing the, the underpass. So that's really nice. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. So I've been thinking a lot, obviously, especially given, you know, our roles on the planning commission, about affordable housing, right? It's, it's a common thread, it's something that we ask for in, you know, previous, the previous sketch plan and in a real development that we see. I think that it also has real impacts when we think about some of the, the redevelopments that we're talking about too, from a single-family home perspective. I think, you know, the one tonight was really interesting and, and sometimes the comments that we get from those in our community are related to massing. And, you know, what is, what is the character of the neighborhood? And I, you know, constantly what I'm thinking about is when we don't have as much affordable housing and when the, the home values are at the level that they're at, to the point where we're seeing, you know, properties upward over a million dollars coming into us and potentially being tear downs. I think that massing will always be something that we're thinking about and that the community is thinking about. So I don't know the right answer, but other than saying we need to continue looking for opportunities to focus on and encourage affordable housing in our community. Okay, not seeing any other comments tonight, so we can go to staff.
Thank you, chair members of the commission. At the last city council meeting, there were no council actions from planning commission, so no report for me this evening.
I smiled because the projected adjournment was for 9:24. So, if someone wants to make a motion.
I move we close this hearing. Are we adjourned?
Okay.
All right, roll call please.
Commissioner Alcare?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burby?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Aignu?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
And it's, it's 9:24.
Good day, y'all.
Night.